All right, turn to order please. I see it's six o'clock. I'm interrupting everybody who are June seventeenth, two thousand thirteen eight. And with turn to order, please have a good time.
Here. He preaching, our time.
Here.
Nancy Brown.
Here.
George Street.
Present.
Richard Winters.
Here.
Ronnie Creve.
Here.
Barry Sees.
Present.
Charles Van Cannon.
Present.
Elsie Chestnut.
Here.
Steve Moran.
Present.
Tom Allen.
Here.
Joyce Lichtenstein.
Present.
Charlie Vegas.
Here.
Bonnie Deen.
Present.
Ken Arden.
Here.
Steve Chamberlain.
Here.
John Lewis.
Here.
Saudi Kohler.
Present.
Russell Cahn.
Here.
Scott Sam. The Orange Room.
Here.
Nat King.
Present.
Robert Hall.
Here.
All right, we'll have our opening prayer by Lawrence Hodgson, and we'll have our pledge of allegiance by Robert Goff.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for the presence we have, that we have this position, Lord. We thank you for everything you've done for us. And I thank you, thank you, Lord, for our county and our government. Lord, God, we ask your blessings, God, be on our behalf, the government, Lord. Thanks be carried out the way you have it. Lead guidance, or if it's shut in, if it's been before, even what it is, if you need your healing hands. Still wish to do the night, have to do what's right, have to do things that up and above over, that your name might be honored and glorified. Thank you for the cross, Christ is the bread. Amen.
Salute our plant of allegiance to the fire of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now we'll come to our third comment section. Any citizens who wish to speak on items on the agenda will be heard at this time. Come up, Mr. Leeson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I tell you, you probably won't throw me out tonight, but I won't speak on something that they think I am. It was just nice meeting you. He seems to have a thing for veterans. You thought one veteran had a head to the meeting was over. Turn him outside. I've embedded that flag in this country that's like a lot more has. And he seems to have a thing about it. When he first went on that chair there, he said he'd throw everybody in there after he had to. This was his show here. And I just don't think he's got that authority that he's going to take it over here tonight, he's going to throw people out. Because I'm going to tell you what I witnessed back here in his back rooms, in these committee meetings. And so far, he's cost us, if this goes like I think it's going to go here tonight, and one's going to be on the agenda. He says that there's nothing on the agenda that the squad's going to bring out there to you because the charm of the committee right there is going to bring some food here, just a little bit of profit. And the way it's set up, he has cost us $260,000 over a four-year term. He tried to bully the rescue squad, he tried to run them out of town, he tried everything. And they offered him a sweetheart bill to start with, and he took it on his own to negotiate this, and he didn't go through nobody, my knowledge. He should have went through all of you for masters, and you designate somebody to negotiate it. But yet, he took it on his own, and he tried the bully style. And anybody that don't think this is right, or confirm, or disconfirm what I'm saying, hit the floor. Because he's going to burn us a unit here tonight, and there ain't nothing we can do about it. He waited until the last minute to attempt to negotiate something like this. And I'm not sure what he thinks negotiation is, but it ain't bullying, it's compromise. They tried every way in the world to compromise with him, and he wouldn't have no part of it. He said, we want you to-
Your time's up, Mr. Leeson.
Aight, he said he wanted to go on down.
Your time's up, Mr. Leeson. Your time is up. Have your seat, sir.
All right, I will. But anyway, you're going to need to watch out for this tonight, because he's going to screw the entire county out of all the taxpayers. For $260,000, maybe even more.
Have your seat, Mr. Leeson.
I'm on my way.
Mr. Shepard.
Jim Shepard from Hampton. Over the last several weeks, I've had the opportunity to sit and watch the committee work on trying to avoid having to increase the taxes of the county. And it's a hard job, and they've worked very hard, and they struggled with it, and they fought over it, there's been harsh words. But I do want to thank them for their efforts on trying to come up with a budget for the county and not raise our taxes. And with that said, though, I do have a couple issues to point out. At the beginning of the budget workshops, they set apart two of the largest budgets of the county, and have discussed them all, schools and the road. And it's going to be very hard to come up with without a tax increase unless those two items are looked at and discussed. The highway department, the Transportation for America issued a report for Tennessee saying that Carter County has the worst bridges in Tennessee, with over forty of them being structurally deficient. And so, my question to the budget commissioners, do you have a plan to address the bridges? And if not, should you? And everyone in this room would agree that Carter County needs more businesses and more jobs. And again, is there anything in the budget to work towards improvement in Carter County, the businesses and the jobs? And many of Carter County citizens can't afford a tax increase, they simply can't afford it, it's a poor county. And there are solutions out there to address this, and hopefully the commission will come up with a plan, so we won't look at a tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepard. Anyone else like to speak? Mr. Snell?
No, I'm just letting you prove.
All right.
Thank you anyways, I appreciate the offer.
Any other citizens comment? Seeing that we're not of acceptance of our minutes from the previous meeting. And before we get into the motion, there's a misprint on page forty-three, about halfway down the page. County officials training program certificate. It should read, county officials training program certificate was presented by Joyne Lichtenstein, Robert Dubble, Nancy Mallett, Mayor Leon Hafner, from the county, and a certified public tax clerk. He was noted as being one out of twenty-four receiving the certificate in the state of Tennessee. Do I have a motion to amend this?
I make a vote for me, and go ahead and check the votes.
You made a vote. Does I have to say it?
I said.
Motion by Mr. Lewis, to promise Lichtenstein to amend this and accept the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm sorry, Mr. Vaughn.
In the minutes on page eighty-nine, the range elementary school is still showing twenty-four personnel. And that prompt may need to be looked at.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Notes and dots, right in front of you.
Jerry Anderson, Harvey Exum, Bartfield, Ashley Woods, Tyler Dutter-Coll, Melissa Doerner, Lori L Hillford, Dr. Malathis, Stacy McLean, and Dr. Lizzy Brandy Curtis.
Brandy Curtis.
Brandy Curtis.
Brandy Curtis. Do I have a motion to accept these notes? Motion, notice, come, taken by Mr. Katt, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, left side? Motion clear. Sheriff Mathis, are you ready to present, or we can put it off a little bit more?
If you please, we should be going with five minutes.
Should recognize the elected officials, you turn, you turn.
That's right, I skipped that. Thank you, Mr. Creve. At this time, I'd like to recognize our elected and foreign officials, if you can stand, please. And any veterans, too, out. The mayor's report.
First, I'd like to give you an update on the group project annex. Greenian sites will be posting an advertisement for bids in the local paper this Wednesday, the nineteenth. A pre-bid conference will be held at the new jail conference room on Tuesday, July the second. And the bid opening is scheduled for Tuesday, July the ninth, in the mayor's conference room. If all goes well, construction hopefully will commence in late July, early August, so that we can get this thing right in before winter months. I do have just a brief update pertaining to the assistance the county requested in early February through the Emergency Watershed Protection Program to restore those streams and roadways that were damaged as a result of a severe rain event in January. We have finally received all permits of the last one came in, not quite a week ago, from TDA. And on Friday, after close of business, I received from Courtney Hansman, Executive Assistant to the State Conservationists, a notice of grant and agreement award letter, locally-led cooperative agreement assurance relating to real property acquisition document and electronic funds transfer form. These items must be completed by the county and returned before we can initiate the process as far as bidding and the like, the project out. An attorney's opinion must accompany the assurance relating to real property acquisition document. Attorney Bowers and I met with all the, one of the property owners along Swimming Pool and Carl Smith Road on June the sixth. He's currently working to secure right of ways of agreements from each of these individuals. Upon receipt of his opinion, we will be in compliance with the request and can proceed with the bid process, and then move on to actual destruction. So we're finally making some progress. Also, last month, the buildings and grounds committee did ask for me to do some research into cost of renovating or making some changes to bathrooms. I've investigated that. Currently, there are a total of twelve urinals and commodes in all the bathrooms in the first and second floor, public bathrooms. Those retrofit valves, the slung retrofit valves are $428 each. We've got slung manual valves in there now. That would equate to $5142. The labor estimate that I have is $125 per valve, that puts you at $1,500. So we're almost $7,000 to replace those valves. I have not taken any action on that because we need that $7,000 in many other places other than replacing those valves on those urinals and commodes. They're perfectly good valves now, they're working properly. The plumbers that I have talked with, and I've talked to at least three, they tell me it would be a mistake to go from, in this particular high-use restroom, to go from the manual valves to the automatic flush. So that's my position on that at this point in time. Also, the issue was brought up as far as the hand dryers. The dryers that we have in the restrooms now are working properly, they've got high velocity, you know, they're really good for what they are. It was suggested that we look at the Dyson Airblade units. I could price those, I've looked all across the internet, and even at Amazon, places like that. Those base units are about $1,600 apiece. Four units, there's another $6,500, not counting the labor to install them. So at this point in time, I feel that it's to our advantage to leave the equipment that we have in place now and maintain it. Now, if one of those dryers fails for whatever reason, then we can look at our upgrade. But till that time happens, my plans are believable as far as costs. Between the two devices, you're looking over $14,000 that we can use for replacement of windows and things out front. And that concludes my report. Do you have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Is there any difference in the water pressure on the valve, existing valves in now, and the new ones you want to put in, if they will put them in?
No, the pressure's the same. The biggest cost for labor to change those out is the time it takes to draw the water pressure. We've got to shut the water off, and you've got to let it draw completely down. And you can't put just a standard auto flush valve, you've got to go with the retrofit kit to put those in. Okay?
I just want to question if any can.
Yeah. I know. Thank you.
Mr. Vaughn? I have a question for the mayor. On the budget meetings, you made a statement that you missed your budget. One that had a three percent, am I correct?
Actually, over the last two years, sir, it's right at seven percent between the buildings and grounds budget-
What happened this year, sir?
This year, a total of three percent approximately in both budgets.
In the mayor's budget, mayor's budget, not building, ground, mayor's.
If you'll hold this one second, I think I have that document with me. I can give you exact information of that. The mayor's budget this year, this year, sir, I had already absorbed with the increases, salary increases and the like. See, I didn't ask for any increase at 2.45%. And the request that was made by the budget committee to take out all of 599 and half of the travel, that's $3,000, that equates to 1.59%. So the total of those two, with what I absorbed and what the budget committee had asked, is 4.04% this year. With the two and a half percent that I did last year, that brings the mayor's budget total reductions 6.54% for the two years.
Eight, line two, seven, line item two oh seven, dash thirty-four. You claim that, sir?
I don't have a clue what you're referring to. My line two oh seven is-
Medical insurance retirees, sir?
Medical insurance retirees, yes, sir. That is a line item that was in the mayor's budget to take care of the health insurance for those that retire from that department. And with that, sir, there are none, so we give make a written deduction to the bottom line of the budget.
Make a reduction.
Yes, sir.
How much is the retirees' insurance?
The retirees' insurance that was in the mayor's budget was $8,050.26.
How much per person, sir?
There is no one getting that. That was one of those line items of excess that's in the mayor's budget that are in motion with department budgets. Mine is not the only one that's been padded over the years, Mr. Arden.
But it's taken back to the budget, sir?
I didn't put that line in there, sir. That was something I inherited.
Then you should have taken that money out.
It's basically gone.
It's basically gone?
Yes, sir. All of it's gone, with the exception of $413.08, and that's part of that 2.45%.
Yes, sir. And who is the person that that is for?
I would suspect that that was for anyone that works in that department that would retire.
So you never cut your budget at all? Because that wasn't your money to cut, sir? That was for a person that is deceased today.
I can't speak to that.
So you can't say that you cut your budget because that money wasn't your money to start with, sir?
Well, commissioner, if all the other office holders will do likewise, then maybe we can save a whole lot more than what was requested by the budget committee.
Are you deceiving this commission, and these people, and the budget commission, by adding this money in here? You're still keeping the $413 off, sir?
Mr. Arden?
You didn't want to cut your budget, $7,600. That's what we're making to cut, sir?
Mr. Arden, if you're a director, take you to line item one oh one, there's $3,757.95 that's a pay increase to the mayor. Okay? If you'll look at line item two oh one, there's $233.
$16,000 is a lot of money, sir, to pay the parking lot over here when we got hygiene issues in this cold house for the public. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe we can revisit this in the budget meeting or-
I think that would be in a proper place. Thank you.
All right, now, we have a update from our Carter County tomorrow director, Mr. Tom Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Haven't been here for a little bit, so I'll be as brief as I can. First off, I'd like to remind everyone that Carter County tomorrow, it's a strategic partnership that is including the Joint Economic and Community Development Board, the Chamber of Commerce, Tourism Council, and the Workhorse Development Council. The Joint Economic and Community Development Board, which is also Carter County tomorrow's board, is a Tennessee statutory board, which derived from the public chapter 1101 way back in the late nineties. And the reason that board was mandated by the state was for the purpose of the board to foster communication relative to economic and community development between and among governmental entities, industry, and private citizens. That being said, I'm going to go ahead and get started on my report. That, so these are some of the things I'm working on currently. There are some things that have been put on hold by the state, some of the larger projects. Right now, we have some existing industry that I'm working with. Central Light Distribution, which is STL, I've been working with them for a few months. They're trying to exercise an option to purchase their building. Everything that we can bring to the table, we have brought to the table. But the bottom line is going to come down to a private individual who owns the building and the selling price of that building. I know for a fact that they have investigated, and they may have even put in an offer to purchase the building in the adjacent community. The financing part of it, I was able to bring some loan programs to them that they qualify for, so essentially, getting the money isn't a problem. But what we have to do despite for these hundred and thirty jobs that could potentially leave, this is something that's very serious to us. We don't need another empty building. The building itself is in good shape. I've got a meeting tomorrow with the property owner. He expressed interest in keeping this company here. I don't believe they want to move, but if it's just a plain financial decision, they will leave. So that is something that we have to do to protect the jobs that we do have here. And if they do stay here, they will be moving 25 new jobs for their international operations from Georgia up here. That will qualify for some incentives, state incentives, nothing federal, of course, but I've had probably about a dozen meetings with different folks, including the CEO and some of their comp controllers, to try to keep them here. The Highlands Group, they took the old Smoky Mountain Book Warehouse. They've got a potential to get an outside investor, which will allow them to add a second shift, which will equate to about 30 new jobs. One of the issues that they had was they needed an air quality permit, and they did not have a 90-day timeframe to get that, and that is what TDEC had told them it would take. I spoke to some of the folks down in Nashville with the air quality people, and I asked, basically asked them for help. And said, what is it we can do locally to try to expedite this, because 90 days from now, this option will be there, and we have the possibility of losing all the jobs, not just gaining the new ones. What they allowed me to do was, they had the permit issuer write the notice, and we published it in the newspaper ourselves, as opposed to waiting for TDEC to do it. All this is very legal, but instead of it being a 90-day window, it was actually closer to four. Hopefully, the permit's going to be issued this week, and once that permit is there, it's going to allow the investors to invest in this property, and then hopefully we'll have a public announcement of that, and who this company is. It's publicly traded, and they requested anonymity at this point. So hopefully, this week, they'll allow that press release to come out. Still working with Mr. Borla at Borla Industries, also working with Tracy Purcell, Alan Stoner. We're trying to help him find tenants, he's helping us, trying to recruit industry. He's got about a hundred and some odd acres that we may work towards getting an industrial, kind of a pad-ready site created. It's just off of exit I-26, which is a very big clean shot down to the port, down to Charleston. And it's not too far from rail access and things like that, so it would be a marketable piece of ground. But I'm also setting them up with international trade teams. This is a new project that the state's putting on. And we'll have some folks from the European Union and the UK come and meet with Mr. Borla to help open up new markets, hopefully in Western Europe. Been working with International Paper, who took over Ringle Container. They're getting new equipment and working on some training for them for some new employees. Lake Spina Spring, working with them on their international trade. NCI, used to be Star Building, of course, we still have the SIA road going on. There is hopefully a meeting coming up either next week or the week after that to hopefully get everybody on the same page, make sure that we get all the pieces in place. T-Dot's been wanting to let this thing so we can get it done. The traffic signal at Don Lewis and 91 is counting on this. This has been going on actually since before our current mayor took office. This is way, way too long. So hopefully, we've done everything we can on our side. We're waiting on some easements to be taken care of, so hopefully we'll get some resolution very soon. Working with AY McDonald, they've got the water issue. Of course, yes, I am proud that they'll take care of that. Working with Saucer Metal about the international trade, Snap-on Tools, basically anytime they ask anything, I help them out. The international trade team has met with them already. We've been able to bring some incentives from the state through the Department of Revenue. We've met with the comptroller of Snap-on, and they'll be able to take advantage of some machinery credits. There's a new industry, it's FWG Spring. It's a German company. They have just recently set up their first office in North America, and I'm working with their one individual that is housed in that office, but they do have plans for a production facility within the next year, two years maximum, in the United States. Of course, you know, I'm going to lobby pretty heavily for Carter County. I'm going to be traveling with this representative to meet some of their suppliers and meet some of the folks that they would be doing business with and kind of showing them logistically why we're in a very, very big location. That's pretty much it on the industrial side. Spark Security Development, some of the other projects. I'm working on the three-star program certification and the grain application. Rowne Mountain Sewer Project, we've got some more informational sessions coming up next month. Start the process to become a certified economic developer. Working with UT Center for Industrial Services with Washington, New York counties. We're going to be doing a kind of showcase. It'll be over at Borla, and we're going to be inviting the industry from these three counties to find out what industrial services UT can bring. I'm going to be doing some education on the new programs that TBA's rolling out. The three counties, the same ones I mentioned prior, we're going to be trying to do a kind of an economic development and industrial forum. It may be five counties, we're not sure right now, we're looking at three. We're looking to do that later this year, maybe before fall, and this is going to be something where the industry could look and talk and meet with folks from the Department of Labor, folks from TBA, anybody who wants to try to get a business and industry loan from USDA, just resources to help what existing industry we have in this region hopefully get stable and stay here. Of course, that has been working with the Carter County Business and Industry Association with their programs and training. The Industrial Bond Board, I'm an advisor on that group. Riverfront Development Project, working with the city, trying to figure out what the best avenue is, whether it's going to be a TIP, which is Tax Income and Finance District, or redevelopment district. The Central Business Improvement District, we're trying to get some pieces put together for the city, talking to the property owners downtown to find out if they're willing to essentially impose a tax on themselves to work in that district. Working with John Shin, he's putting in an assisted living facility next to Dr. Hoplin's place. We're exploring different avenues to pay to have a sewer line relocated, which will allow him to build on that property and maximize the use of that parcel. We're working right now to do a retail recruitment plan, which includes the hotel. This is something that's going to allow us to market, and it's going to allow us to go to retailers directly and hopefully incent why they need to come here, which is going to allow us to increase our assets and our tax base, and then there's going to be job creation on top of it. Working right now with the state, trying to get a Civil War Trail designation so we can get a little star in Elizabethan. We're going to tie into Barron's Monument, and they are going to have to vet that and accept it. And freshly painted a handicap spot outside the courthouse is specifically for us to even be able to apply for. We had to have an ADA compliant parking spot near the monument, so that's why that's why that's bad in there. We're also working with Scott, he's in here, Bowers about the Veterans Monument Centennial. And then there's another assisted living community project that we're working on, which we've come to Carter County. Some other things, there's a possible half marathon, working with Blue Ridge Endurance for Rowne Mountain. It could be a half marathon race up there. This is something that we're wanting to do yearly. Once we get an individual in tourism, it will obviously follow them to follow up on, but right now I'm working with the individual, trying to get that established. The same person's also wanted to do a cycling qualifying event in Rowne Mountain through Blue Ridge Endurance. Well, I guess I graduated. It's in Carter County adult leadership class in 2013. Working with the committee through the chamber for the Fourth of July Day. Working to put together a Jason Whitten Day with the city. They've given him a key and are designating June 21 to be Jason Whitten Day from now on. Of course, a couple of great celebrations coming up this week. Working with about three entrepreneurs on their business plans. Of course, at the Workhorse Development Complex, we're going through a lot of renovations. Northeast State's expansion, and we also have roof issues that we're trying to deal with. Last week, we just finished up, the week before last, the catfish tournament. We had 244 kids participate, and that was the fourth annual one, and it's going to be pretty popular, and we're very pleased to be able to do that at no cost to the participants. Working with Glenn Barry on the Rambles and Trails Project, helping him with some community connections and helping him get some survey data out, so as they make these decisions for the life and longevity of the trail, you know, it's going to be good decisions, so we'll be very proud of that. And lastly, I'm going to finish putting together the fishing brochure that was kind of left unfinished. I've been working with TWRA and Absolute Communication and Kingsport to get the final pieces, so hopefully in the next three or four weeks, we'll have a new fishing brochure, which will have to be a little more informative and up-to-date than our last three weeks. And lastly, Carter County Tomorrow, and I know a lot of the questions that have come up as far as the reporting and knowing exactly what is going on with Carter County Tomorrow, I've talked with the leadership, and one of the things I was wanting to do is to have the executive board, which is essentially the mayors and the officers, meet every month and have the Joint Economic and Community Development Board meet quarterly. This will meet the minimum statute for the state, and it will allow us to, you know, have a lot more input from our elected officials, which, as I pointed out, that is when they're all supposed to come together to plan for the future of Carter County, which will also allow us to clarify what Carter County Tomorrow's mission is. We can be a lot more strategic, we can have measurable goals, we can have action plans, and we can have deadlines, and every bit of this can be published on the website, so anybody in the community that was curious on where certain projects are, they will be able to go online and look at this. And this is just part of what the Joint Economic Community Development Board is supposed to do. This is their charge. They need to establish priorities, and I will do my darndest to finish and meet those goals, and if I don't meet those goals, I'll be able to report why not, and this is something that'll be done monthly, so there won't be any lags and questions. So, that being said, any questions?
Mr. Anderson, you've got the toughest job in Borla. Having been there, I know that. There's only one question I'd like to ask. Are you spread too thin?
Yes, sir, to be effective. And that's where if we can be more specific, because as I just read off everything, that's what I'm working on.
So if you are, I would suggest that you come back with some sort of solution, because a lot of people are getting frustrated and realizing the economy is being as bad as it is, realizing the two big industries here are, came from Johnson City, rather than away from here. If you're spread too thin, for the good of all of us, let us know in some way.
That process will begin at my board meeting on the 24th, and it's going to be where I can engage the board members. I've talked to Dr. Keith Young, who's coming on the board, and in July, we will start the strategic planning, and not just as an exercise, but as something real. This is something that's going to have that meat behind it, because this will allow people to gauge, are we doing the right things? And it'll give us a track record of, are we doing the right things, instead of trying to be all things to all people. We'll just have to make the important decisions, and what's going to move us forward.
Mr. Anderson, this is out to a terrace. We start out the bridge up here. You see bushes going up through the bridges, you see porches and bines coming up over bridges. You come up to Sixth District where Waltham Lake is. The grass is so high, you can't see it out on the road. Dead animals is all the way around the lake. That won't be picked up. True to goodness, somebody, you're hitting, when somebody can have another corner nice and get this grass mowed, if you want terrace, you've got to make a few preparations to- now, I presume people can go out through Waltham Lake, they can't see the light, the grass is going. Are there anything we can do about that?
Well, yes, there is, and I think you're right. The squeaky wheel will get those things done. 321, we are putting the paperwork in, and a lot of it's held up because of the federal budget, but we're trying to get it designated as a scenic byway. That's one of the gateways coming in. And Carter County is one of the gateways, and the other end is Smoky Mountain National Park. They keep their stuff mowed. We would have to keep our stuff mowed, too. I believe you're right. This is where we need to, as our elected officials, we need to tell T-Dot to keep that grass mowed.
What if, what seems to be the problem, T-Dot, that you stood them out when these other governments are, and if you go and make that frequent water, uh, scenic route, and I'm like, you go and keep it mowed?
You need it to look nice. If you're high above, you've got to have a nice place for it.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Hey, Tom. I'd like to thank Mr. Von Can and Earl for bringing us up to that one ago. I know firsthand what it does, Joe, and I know if you are spread, I'd be thinking, really aren't. I would have had no idea of what's involved in these kinds of development. A few years ago, when I got on Carter County Tomorrow, it is one of the most competitive hardest jobs in the county. And I commend you for the work that you've done. I know firsthand a lot of things you're working on. I see what you're working on, and frankly, you're doing a good job, and I'm proud of you. Just keep doing what you're doing, and a lot of people think that things happen overnight. They, that don't happen overnight. And I think a lot of people need to realize just how competitive, just how hard this job is. I mean, it's like trying to catch a eagle by a hand. It's hard to hang on to it, because you've got all these other counties and all these other places trying to, if you're going after the industry, everybody else is, too. And our biggest industries are the ones that everybody else is trying to steal away from us. And you've done a good job, Stanford, Stanford Snap-on Doors, get their expansion done. You've done a great job with the leaders of Northeast State, get Northeast State expansion. You've done an excellent job with Tennessee Technology, and I see the buildings are going up. And can you kind of give us a brief update on the progress and when we expect them to open?
Well, they're, some of the buildings will be completed this year, but they're shooting for 2014 for when the bulk of it will be opened, so they haven't had any snacks, so it should be right on schedule. Once they get the main consolidated campus completed, then they're going to start renovating the building that they're in right now for their nursing programs. And they're already looking to figure out, you know, the best use and be able to expand, you know, some of the, I guess, the welding programs, the things that've got the waiting list and has got the highest placement rates, so they'd be real sensitive to that, and it's looking very positive. And Mr. Levin, obviously, he's getting appointed to state level, so he's doing well.
In case a lot of people didn't know, Tennessee Technology has the biggest LPN clients that are running the state. Most of their jobs today are healthcare related. Now, Northeast State offers, you can get RN degree at Northeast State, you can be a CMA at Northeast State. A lot of people don't realize the importance in that, the education. And the less key, as he says, to Carter County, goes, when you're working with a, when you're working with a prospective client, the first thing, you can clarify this, and I know Mr. Von Can again, the first thing that they're concerned about, that we have the education, we have the workforce, that we need to do our job. You've got Tennessee Technology, and I know you've been very good about taking people with Tennessee Technology and say, here's what we can offer. And they can set up shops there and train a workforce right at Tennessee Technology. So we've got all the essentials, we've got the foundation built, and I know that this didn't, in the next few years, I think we want to see a big improvement in Carter County thanks to the hard work that's been put into it. And I do not.
I'd like to ask two or three more questions, please. How many spec buildings do you have to show people?
None.
Zero. How many acres of land do you have to show people?
That we can control, that we control? Zero. We're personally none.
The commission at the county has sent this man out to recruit industry, recruit business with zero land, zero buildings to show? That's about like sending a man to a football kicking gun, a one-legged man to a football kicking gun test.
It's hard to sell out of empty wagons.
Therefore, let's point your fingers some other directions.
Mr. Anderson, I don't have any negative thing about what you do. My concern is we have two representatives from this commission that's on the Carter County Tomorrow, and, you know, it would be of interest to me to have feedback from their viewpoint, from the commissioners' viewpoint, as to what we as commissioners need to be doing to support Carter County Tomorrow. You know, I haven't been told things. Maybe I don't know enough to ask the right questions. You know, if I was in that position, I don't know that I would do any better than what they've done. It's just that I think the commissioners need the commissioners' point of view as to what's going on with Carter County Tomorrow.
Yeah, I agree, and I believe that's when the state put this law together, that's why they wanted to make sure there's representation, not just the mayors, but the commissioner and the city council people, too.
The representation, but to bring the information back.
That's supposed to be the connection, so it's the information sharing piece, and I think that's where we are, and we need to do that, we need to share it.
Mr. Black, if you're going to be able to graduate, you're part of the agenda and the community fortune now. Don't get me wack.
I could answer some of Mr. Black's questions about what the commission can do to be a help to Carter County Farm. Government will create jobs, right sector creates jobs. What the county commission's role in economic development is actually creating the right atmosphere to the correct business. That works when you've got, when you've got the safety leaders and the happy leaders working together and using them. Then it's when you can get back to that.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Appreciate it.
Can I share?
I'll be real brief with Chairman Bowers. To permission earlier, I want to remind everyone coming up this week, I've been a bachelor, I guess, to Carter County, doing more than a dozen radio and TV shows recently just to promote folks coming to Carter County on behalf of the 47th Annual Cover Bridge. Want to remind you that it starts tomorrow night. We still have a few tickets left for Taste of Carter County. Wednesday nights, Gospel Night; Thursday nights, Bluegrass Night; Friday nights, Country Night; and Saturday nights, Rock Night. Friday picture of Jason Whitten Day with festivities starting at 2 o'clock here at the Cover Bridge. On July the 3rd, we have a race, 4K race for United Way, be downtown also, and July 4th parade featuring and honoring our veterans. The biggest reason I ask to be on the agenda today, and I won't take your time now, we wait till after the commission meeting, but we recently was, had a visit from Teresa Colwell. She is the litter coordinator for T-Dot for the State of Tennessee's Litter Campaign. She visited, met with Ingrid, myself, and the mayor, talking about our litter efforts and what's going on there. Appreciate the Joel Street taking an active role, as well as Benny Lyons, and happy to report, based on what Benny's telling us, that the recycling in our schools is up 25 percent. That's a pretty neat thing for our environment, got our kids involved. I'll recognize Lieutenant Frady for taking a real active role. I'll recognize this Tina Frady for taking a real active role. But in the last year, we, in our last four years, we've been doing a program inside the schools. Ms. Culver came up, witnessed at Happy Valley Elementary, the school that, uh, our SROs are doing with, um, high schoolers. They don't want to listen to law enforcement. They don't want to listen to us old phobies. I'll put myself in that for more than a couple of minutes, but they'll listen to these teenagers. This year, they took on the role of superheroes. And actually, this year's program, and if you guys come up, anyone that want to, I want to present, we got enough from, from our litter grant, present you guys a good neat Carter County, uh, recycling tee shirt to help promote, uh, recycling. We want to give each one of you guys a, uh, a tee shirt while we have, for those who supplies last, to try to give, give everybody a shirt. But I want to make a presentation to you guys, uh, on behalf of our litter program. And if you guys would help us advertise out there, what we're trying to do is keep Carter County beautiful. And, uh, it's a neat thing that our, our kids are involved in doing that. To see that up twenty-five percent is a pretty neat thing. The last thing I wanted for me is, we're actually going to be in a video. We've been selected this Sunday, part of Bluegrass and cleaning up Carter County. They're coming here on Sunday afternoon to do a video, uh, featuring folks from Carter County, uh, Roam Mountain, I think, the Roam Mountain Moonshatter Band. We're going to feature them, uh, feature some of us at the jail that play music. And they're going to go out and watch some of the folks pick up litter and feature us across the state. Uh, so I think that's a positive thing that we're doing something about it. So, of all the places to pick it up, they picked us here to, uh, to do that. So, if any of y'all would like a tee shirt, I'd be happy to present one of these to you. Uh, while supplies last, I think I got a few back there. Just want to say thank you for supporting us and helping us to keep the county clean.
Sheriff, you got a bacon?
I've got a couple of big ones. Here's a two eggs. I'll let you start off. Yes, ma'am.
We're not supposed to save any kind of presents or gifts or anything.
Anybody can take those. Those are not gifts. Those are, if you don't want to accept one this round, you don't have to get one. So, I'm happy to give those. Those, we get them out to people to advertise for, stop the litter, and try to get the message out. We want people that see, sees that. And if you feel uncomfortable, uh, you can report me.
Hey, Sheriff, you got any small?
We'll try to present, we'll, 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 if I spike one of them.
Thank you very much. For children's sake.
I made a special order. You, we might have some U-4 large ones.
All right. We all appreciate what a good job the sheriff does with his litter program. Now, we're going to the, uh, community reports for recommendations. Uh, let's begin, Mr. Sisk. Oh, I'm sorry. The, uh, uh, Mr. Bowers called me just before, uh, meeting time and said he's, uh, ill and won't be able to, and he will be on the agenda for next, next month.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Black, I'll just be note, the Carter County Rescue Squad has agreed to provide services same as have been being provided for the citizens of Carter County. At a cost of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars with a four-year agreement. So, at this time, I make a motion to accept the offer of a hundred and seventy thousand for four years.
Hey, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second? Second from Mr. Testin. And discussion, Mr. Lewis.
Yeah, I'm a question. Now, I'm not down on the rescue squad. I'll support it. But this worries me when we're going to have a four-year contract with no paperwork. Do we have, do we have some kind of paperwork on this to protect us and protect it?
Yes. It, it was necessary that this body passes this, agree to it, and the contract will be...
Any of the rest of that will follow?
Will follow, yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor.
The only question and concern that I have is, uh, from day one, we've always talked about putting this thing out for bids. We know we have this deadline. The deadline is right upon us. We work toward that. Initially, a year ago, we were talking about four-year agreements. And then we changed courses and we talked about only a one-year agreement. And that one-year agreement was two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, we have a four-year agreement. If Mr. Chairman, since you're the one that's been doing negotiations, can you tell me how you and the parties that were involved negotiating, determine that this hundred and seventy thousand dollars for a four-year term is what's in the best interest of the taxpayers of Carter County? Because initially, we were talking about negotiating terms for one year, and then we would put it out for bids, which is what we should be doing on any type of long-term contract. And we need to have finance director involved in that process. We're under the nineteen eighty-one Financial Management Act. We're not under the fifty-seven act or any of the other acts. So, can you tell me, sir, why this body should vote in support of that four-year, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars? What did you use as a basis to determine that's a good deal for the taxpayer of Carter County?
Basically, Mr. Mayor, I started off with the, uh, figure of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that you and, uh, Mr. Lewis and others here, uh, urged us to, uh, to pay. I thought that was way too high. And nobody appointed me the order high negotiator. I was in the courthouse one, uh, one day, and I was in the, uh, Carter Masters office. Had to run into, uh, Attorney Norris. And quite naturally, we started talking about that. We stepped outside to continue our conversation. And he went to Mr. Arnold, told him our conversation. Mr. Arnold, I guess, went back to him, responded. Mr. Norris responded to Attorney Bowers. Mr. Bowers called me. We think about it, and I called me to Bowers about it. We repeat this process just, just the opposite way. And it went on that way for two weeks or so. And when I thought, it, I had to put my personal feelings about this aside for the county. No matter how I feel about it, I think, uh, you got to look at the big picture for the, uh, uh, service to these people, uh, our citizens, our taxpayers. Uh, need the ambulance service. They need a search and rescue group. So, we settled on this one figure. I said, well, that sounds like something the county may be able to live with. You know, we met back in, uh, November of two thousand twelve and voted to give them a one-year contract. That was the plan by the rescue squad. Uh, at one point in time, we brought up a subject and put it out on bids. That was voted dead. So, I felt like this was in the common good and the best interest of everybody in Carter County, no matter which side of the issue you're on. If you, uh, like the rescue squad, if you don't like them, if you don't have any particular feelings one way or the other. Uh, I felt like, uh, over a five-year term, we'd save, uh, uh, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the people of Carter County. And that's where we're at today. And I still, uh, backed that innovation that was, uh, passed by the council committee, because I'm a full here of that.
Mr. Bowers, I would like to amend that motion to have two county commissioners on the board of directors of the rescue squad.
I don't know the legalities of that. I don't believe...
It's legal.
Uh, actually, the, uh, we're, we're in a, uh, legal situation now where the city has some, and I believe that's, uh...
Is that by least, and there's two city commissioners on the board of directors, Mr. Chairman?
That's correct. You're exactly right.
Is it legal for them?
I think the mayor made a wise move when he was serving on the committee, on the board of directors, to step away from that position due to the fact, I think, it created conflict of interest. I can't give advice to the city. But if you negotiate a contract on behalf of the county against an outside agency, I don't believe that you could be the... And I, I think the mayor made a wise decision. I, I think it will be, he could certainly make that request if you're ever in a negotiation with him in the future. I think those commission members should step off of that, off that board at that time. And you, that was something you'd have to ask the rescue squad if they'd be willing to accept that.
Does Mr. Norris think so, that?
If he's comfortable, I, I don't know if Mr. Norris, if he's comfortable asking that question. I certainly value his opinion.
I think we've already been there and done that. Mayor stepped out forward due to the vice counsel himself.
What about the city commissioners? We were talking about the county.
I know, I would, I would really...
We're talking about the county, sir. Let's leave it to the county. We'll deal with that situation with the city ourselves.
Would you all accept to county and major normal vote?
We've already been there. And, and the mayor got off the board, keep the street.
That's the mayor I'm talking about, county and major.
He, he was a county representative. I think it's, I think it's a bad policy, please, on that nature of this...
I believe commissioners read the same thing as the mayor. Anybody connected with the county being on a, a board that we have to do business with, it's probably a violation. Now, the city has to answer to their...
A withdrawal, I think.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Von Can.
You, you stated correctly that it probably would have been a violation of the sunshine law to have you and another commissioner on the negotiating committee. However, my research into the Financial Management Act nineteen eighty-one indicates to me that the finance director should have been one of the committee members. And the only other person that could have been without violation of sunshine law would have been the county mayor. So, there's three, three options there. Three people that should have been involved, in my opinion, in the negotiation. And instead of leaving it in the hands of one, that's just my comment, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Von Can. Mr. Bowers?
There is a hundred-and-eighty-day clause in my parade. That either more can bail out an hundred-and-eighty days before the year...
Correct.
That's four-year, not a one-year.
That's correct. Any, any other discussion? Mr. Chairman.
I believe that clause is not... It's just the same as the contract most before. And I think it's not even right to extend it to the end of four years.
No, I think we...
I mean, if we go a hundred-and-eighty, eighty, a hundred-and-eighty-day clause, then it's a hundred-and-eighty-day contract. I think it's what Mr. Martin said, and that's not what...
No, a hundred-and-eighty days before the end of the contract, right?
At the end of four years.
Mr. Chairman.
I can't believe we're sitting here tonight, uh, talking about this and that. Before the both of them, we were trying to save a quarter of a million dollars for taxpayer money that we were getting ready last month to owe on two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, two hundred and twenty-five thousand. I think what we need to look at is what is in the best interest of the people of this county. We need the rescue squad. And you like them, you like them or not. And I, I appreciate what Mr. Bowers meant. When we elected Mr. Bowers chairman of this commission, he represents this commission. He represents all of us. And he stepped up and went and negotiated with, and like he said, he, well, Mr. Norris and they started to negotiate. And today, we have to come up with saving taxpayers almost a quarter of a million dollars over four years. Now, I, I think that we don't have the time here. We need, we need the rescue squad. It's time for the commission, we, as commissioners, I feel like I've had a lot of fun telling people it was worrying about this and squad. And I appreciate what you've done. And I think that, that saving this money, especially in a time when we're out here trying to buy, trying to buy money to keep this county going, is a good, is a good move. Rescue squad is getting to a four-year contract, which means that we're not going to have to come back here next year and do this again. So, let's live, let's live, if not what's good for, for, for us, the commissioners, what's good for them. Let's live what's good for the people of Carter County.
Top of the question.
Now, the question is on the motion. Mad Clerk.
Recompete. Mark Hahn.
No.
Nancy Brown.
Hi.
Joel Street.
Hi.
Richard Winters.
Hi.
Ronnie Kip.
No.
Mary Sees.
Hi.
Charles Van Kana.
Hi.
Gussie Testor.
Hi.
Steve Moran.
Hi.
Tom Allen.
Hi.
Joyne Lichtenstein.
Hi.
Charlie Baker.
Hi.
Bobby Deeds.
Hi.
Ken Arden.
No.
Steve Chang.
Hi.
John Lewis.
Hi.
Sonya Kover.
Hi.
Russell Pye.
Hi.
Scott Sands. Bill Armstrong.
Um.
Peggy.
God.
Robert Goddard.
Hi.
Chairman, hi.
Mad Clerk, Chairman, hi.
Turning on eyes, motion carries.
Okay. You've had on the table before you a list of donations that were made to the animal shelter. So, I make a motion to accept the donation, close at five, that's six hundred and forty-one dollars for the animal shelter at this time.
Say it again.
Motion by Mr. Sisk, accepted by Ms. Brown, to, uh, recognize this donation. Any discussion? Call out, please.
Recompete. Mark Hahn.
Hi.
Nancy Moran.
Hi.
Joel Street.
Hi.
Richard Winters.
Hi.
Ronnie Kip.
Hi.
Mary Sees.
Hi.
Charles Van Kana.
Hi.
Gussie Testor.
Hi.
Steve Moran.
Hi.
Tom Allen.
Hi.
Joyne Lichtenstein.
Hi.
Charlie Baker.
Hi.
Bobby Deeds.
Hi.
Ken Arden.
Hi.
Steve Chang.
Hi.
John Lewis.
Hi.
Sonya Kover.
Hi.
Russell Pye.
Hi.
Scott Sands. Bill, Bill Armstrong.
Hi.
Peggy.
Hi.
Robert Goddard.
Hi.
With all eyes, motion carries. Excuse me, Mr. Sisk. I have a request for your ten-minute recess. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
I'm afraid to say, aye. Ten minutes, we'll be right back. Community reports, Mr. Sisk.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Sheriff's Department has requested a fund received from the insurance company, reimbursement for the vehicle, and the proceeds from the auction of June fifteenth. They've requested that those funds be put in a reserve account to purchase another vehicle. So, I make a motion to place the funds in the reserve account for the purchase of another vehicle for the Sheriff's Department.
Say it again.
I have a motion by Mr. Sisk, that I mentioned, to return this money to the Sheriff's Department for a purchase of another vehicle. Discussion, Mr. Lewis.
Uh, Mr. Sisk, how much, do we know how much that auction brought in, Mr. Lewis?
We have the total, but we don't have how much is broken out into each fund. It had school department stuff in it, it had drug fund stuff, sheriff's department stuff. We will get that later this week and have those totals.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
And let me just add, that, that money is from a vehicle that officer was involved in a rent. It wasn't our fault, and let's go back and place that bill.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion?
Question?
I got it all.
Recompete.
Hi.
Keith Reed.
Mark Hahn.
Hi.
Nancy Moran.
Hi.
Joel Street.
Pass.
Richard Winters.
Hi.
Ronnie Kip.
Hi.
Mary Sees.
Hi.
Charles Van Kana.
Hi.
Gussie Testor.
Call out of the board of Carter County, have a conflict of interest, so it's possible, but...
Aye.
Ronnie Krieger.
Aye.
Mary Sis.
Aye.
Charles Van Kenna.
Aye.
Gelsey Testor.
Call that as a void card, county. Have a conflict of interest, propose it by the court. I want to draw a pardon, propose a right of prosecution, obligation, judicial assistance. This body represents.
Aye.
Steve Moran.
Aye.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joyne Lichtenstein.
Aye.
Charlie Baynes.
Aye.
Bobby Deans.
Aye.
Ken Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Covern.
Aye.
Russell Pye.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Peggy.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
I'd like to change my vote.
All I ask, motion carries.
Okay, and next item, excuse me, the sheriff's department requests the proceeds from inmate communications be placed in the reserve account for purchase technology needs of the department. So, I make that motion at this time.
I have a motion from Mr. Sisk, seconded by Mr. Hart, to return this money to the sheriff's office. Any discussion?
What was being done with this money? I, I know that we entered into a new contract, but we had an old contract too.
And we never received a dime of that payment. So, it was kind of a fictitious budget item, is what it was. And Attorney Bowers is in the process of negotiating with that.
We've got to judge it. It's just a matter of...
We haven't received anything.
And one, one more question. How much money are we talking about in the course of a year's time, approximately?
Just so I got a printout. To date, we have collected seventy-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars. But of that, seventeen thousand was a grant that was received from Securus. And then we also paid a payment for jail tracker and PAMAT, which is the information systems within the jail. So, you have moved out, you've moved out thirty-four thousand to cover those items. So, you have about forty thousand left.
And do we have li, do we have a line item where we have been paying for these technology advances before in the sheriff's budget?
There's really not been any technology advances in that. Now, what they have done is they've got the jail tracker and the PAMAT system with the new jail, and that was what I would consider a technologically, technological advance. And that was paid for through this inmate communications money.
Well, the point I'm trying to get to, does, we've got access money here. And does that save us some money on our tax dollars somewhere, can it?
Well, they had no budgeted line item for technology in the sheriff's budget. There was no budgeted line item for that. And they had an office supply line item. And if they were able to scrimp and save out of their office supplies, they could buy technology needs. But obviously, that's not a large amount to purchase any kind of technology.
Thank you.
Aye.
Mark Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Krieger.
Aye.
Mary Sis.
Aye.
Charles Van Kenna.
Aye.
Gelsey Testor.
Aye.
Peggy.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All I ask, motion carries.
General purpose fund, one sixteen, amendment number eight, for twenty-six items, total of one hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and three cents, zero, coming from fund balance. This amendment is to clean up their line items and get the funds into the proper place to pay the bills. I make a motion that we approve amendment number eight.
Say it again. I have a motion by Mr. Sisk, seconded by Mr. Testor, to approve amendment number eight to general fund one over one. Any discussion? Call her up, please.
U.S. Peter.
Aye.
Mark Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Krieger.
Aye.
Mary Sis.
Aye.
Charles Van Kenna.
Aye.
Gelsey Testor.
Aye.
Steve Moran.
Aye.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joyne Lichtenstein.
Aye.
Charlie Baynes.
Aye.
Bobby Deans.
Aye.
Ken Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Covern.
Aye.
Russell Pye.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Peggy.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All I ask, motion carries.
General purpose fund, one forty-one, amendment number eleven, six items, for a total of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars, with one hundred and twenty-eight thousand coming from highway fund balance. I make a motion that we approve this amendment.
Say it again.
Motion by Mr. Sisk, seconded by Mr. Lewis, to approve amendment five from the fund one sixteen. Any discussion? Call her up, please.
U.S. Peter.
Aye.
Mark Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Krieger.
Aye.
Mary Sis.
Aye.
Charles Van Kenna.
Aye.
Gelsey Testor.
Aye.
Steve Moran.
Aye.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joyne Lichtenstein.
Aye.
Charlie Baynes.
Aye.
Bobby Deans.
Aye.
Ken Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Covern.
Aye.
Russell Pye.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Peggy.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All I ask, motion carries.
General purpose fund, one seventeen, amendment number one, two items, for a total of three hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, ten cents, zero coming from fund balance. I make a motion that we approve these amendments.
Say it again.
I have a motion by Mr. Sisk, seconded by Mr. Brown, to approve amendment number one from the general purpose fund one, one, seven. Any discussion? Call her up, please.
U.S. Peter.
Aye.
Keith Richards.
Aye.
Mark Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Krieger.
Aye.
Mary Sis.
Aye.
Charles Van Kenna.
Aye.
Gelsey Testor.
Aye.
Steve Moran.
Aye.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joyne Lichtenstein.
Aye.
Charlie Baynes.
Aye.
Bobby Deans.
Aye.
Ken Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Covern.
Aye.
Russell Pye.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Peggy.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All I ask, motion carries. General purpose school fund, one forty-one, amendment number two, four items, total of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars, with one hundred and twenty-eight thousand coming from highway fund balance. I make a motion that we approve this amendment number two.
Say it again.
I have a second, or have a motion by Mr. Sisk, seconded by Mr. Clark, to approve amendment number two, highway fund one, thirty-one. Any discussion? Call her up, please.
U.S. Peter.
Aye.
Mark Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Krieger.
Aye.
Mary Sis.
Aye.
Charles Van Kenna.
Aye.
Gelsey Testor.
Aye.
Steve Moran.
Aye.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joyne Lichtenstein.
Aye.
Charlie Baynes.
Aye.
Bobby Deans.
Aye.
Ken Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Covern.
Aye.
Russell Pye.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All I ask, motion carries.
General purpose school fund, one forty-one, amendment number ten, four items, total of eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and ninety cents, zero coming from fund balance. I make a motion that we approve this amendment.
Say it again.
Motion by Mr. Sisk, seconded by Mr. Chambers, to approve amendment ten, general purpose school fund, one forty-one. Any discussion? Call her up, please.
U.S. Peter.
Aye.
Mark Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Bobby Deans.
Aye.
Ken Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Covern.
Aye.
Russell Pye.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Gelsey Testor.
Aye.
Steve Moran.
Aye.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joyne Lichtenstein.
Aye.
Charlie Baynes.
Aye.
Bobby Deans.
Aye.
Ken Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Covern.
Aye.
Russell Pye.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Peggy.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All I ask, motion carries.
General purpose school fund, one forty-one, amendment number eleven, sixteen items, for a total of one hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-three cents, zero coming from fund balance. I make a motion that we approve amendment number eleven.
Say it again.
Motion by Mr. Sisk, seconded by Mr. Chambers, to approve amendment number six, federal projects fund, one forty-two. Any discussion? Call her up, please.
U.S. Peter.
Aye.
Mark Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Call that as a void card, county. Have a conflict of interest, propose it by the court. I want to draw a pardon, I want to draw a conscience of malfeasance to my constituents and citizens. This body represents. Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Krieger.
Aye.
Mary Sis.
Aye.
Charles Van Kenna.
Aye.
Gelsey Testor.
Aye.
Steve Moran.
Aye.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joyne Lichtenstein.
Aye.
Charlie Baynes.
Aye.
Bobby Deans.
Aye.
Ken Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Covern.
Aye.
Russell Pye.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Peggy.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All I ask, motion carries. Federal projects fund, one forty-two, amendment number six, two items, for a total of one hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and three dollars, eighty-four cents, zero coming from fund balance. I make a motion that we approve amendment number six.
Say it again. Motion by Mr. Sisk, seconded by Mr. Chambers, to approve amendment number six, federal projects fund, one forty-two. Any discussion? Call her up, please.
U.S. Peter.
Aye.
Mark Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.[1430.16]
This body represents, aye.
Richard Wynn.
Aye.
Ronnie Cribb.
Aye.
Mary Sisk.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Steve Moran.
Aye.
Tom Bowles.
Aye.
Joy Blankenship.
Aye.
Tommy Baker.
Aye.
Bobby Deans.
Aye.
Ian Arden.
Employee or against who's this having conflict with Anderson, aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Tony Carter.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sam, Phil, Tom Petty.
Aye.
Rob Rob.
Aye.
All eyes on the chair.
Okay, Mr. Lyons came before the committee in the late evening and he has received a grant, thirty-three thousand dollars to be paid upfront on an eighty percent, twenty percent breakback. So, what that comes down to is the state would put up twenty-six thousand four hundred dollars, the county would put up seven thousand six hundred dollars for the twenty percent in order to get this grant. But everything, we would have to put up thirty-three thousand ahead to get the grant in operation and we'd be reimbursed by twenty-six thousand dollars. Make a motion and we approve the thirty-three thousand cost upfront from the general fund we received at eighty percent reimbursement.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Sisk, seconded by Mr. Lewis to approve this solid waste grant. Any discussion? I have a question. Mr. Lyons, when is the deadline for this grant to be applied for?
It has to be installed operational by September thirtieth.
Say it again.
September thirtieth.
September thirtieth.
Yes. And actually, the state's party is twenty-five south.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Do we have any money in the grant fund?
You do have money in the grant fund, but I don't know what the balance is off the top of my head. We utilize some of that fund for the fire departments. I just have to go pull it off the system. I don't have it with me.
Any other, any other discussion?
Can you forward to see how much we do have?
Say it again.
Can you forward to see how much we do have?
I can tell you as of May the thirty-first, if you look at your reports, the only grant fund that I have is the fifteen thousand dollars that's set aside in the fire department. One item, there's twelve thousand dollars remaining in that fund. And I know as of today, we've not spent any since May thirty-first. I can tell you that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor.
One, one question. That's a case right there, pulling all of that from the general fund, if you like to do so. I know it's something like during the year, there's going to be that seven thousand plus dollars in the landfill budget. Wouldn't it make sense if that landfill reimbursed that or be responsible for that seven thousand dollars?
Makes sense, it's made.
You have to pay the cost upfront. Landfill cash flow cannot cover that cost, but you could make them pay back the twenty percent match that you're required. You could easily make that come back to general fund. This is just saying we'll pay the upfront cost out of the general fund.
Right, but I think we need to outline the terms now, and I think that's very gullible when you average it out. So that's coming from the landfill over.
Any other discussion? I'll roll, please.
Can I ask one question?
Aye, drop down.
In great, in preparing to solve the question, there's several items that are known factors that are mandated per se. Why couldn't those be set out together? Then we'd know where we stand in the rest of the year. For example, hauling off the flood from the, from the landfill.
Mm-hmm.
You know that's going to happen. It doesn't happen with the same amount because of rainfall, but you know that that's a mandated expense. There's also mandated expense, at least one or two others.
Well, I can tell you that we budget for the disposal of the waste, which if you operate a transfer station, you have to dispose of that waste. We no longer have a landfill we can dump it in. That is budgeted in the landfill budget. We also have the hauling of the water that is budgeted in the landfill budget. And we have the operation of the convenience centers that are budgeted in the landfill budget. And I don't think the budget seems to be the problem for the landfill operations. The problem is the amount of cash flow that they have.
The commissioners need to understand, though, that there are expenses in there that are reoccurring every year that, that Benny has no control over. We have no control over. They are mandated and they've got to be met. But we look at it as a big picture from the question and say, hey, he's doing, he's doing great, he's not doing very. This would help us understand, this would help us understand where we really are in that budget.
I believe I need to be addressed in our landfill budget committee, or landfill committee.
Right.
Any other discussion? I'll roll, please.
Peter Peter.
Aye.
Mark Ryan.
Aye.
Nate Brandt.
Aye.
George Street.
Aye.
Richard Wynn.
Aye.
Ronnie Cribb.
Aye.
Mary Sisk.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Steve Moran.
Aye.
Tom Bowles.
Aye.
Joy Blankenship.
Aye.
Tommy Baker.
Aye.
Bobby Deans.
Aye.
Ian Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Tony Carter.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Petty.
Aye.
Tom Bowles.
Aye. All eyes on the chair.
Excuse me, the next item, Sheriff Mathis requested the funds received from the best of paper as well as the calendar sales be recognized. I think this was brought up by the auditor to him and we need to recognize those funds. The best of paper revenue currently goes to the general fund and the calendar sales goes to the direct fund.
Direct, that's true.
So, in recognition of these funds, I make a motion to accept the funds from the best of paper into the general fund and the proceeds from the calendar sales to the direct fund.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sisk, seconded by Mr. Blankenship to recognize these funds. The best of paper due to the general fund, the direct, or excuse me, the calendar proceeds go to the direct fund. Any discussion? I'll roll, please.
Peter Peter. Mark Ryan.
Aye.
Nate Brandt.
Aye.
George Street.
Aye.
Richard Wynn.
Aye.
Ronnie Cribb.
Aye.
Mary Sisk.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Steve Moran.
Aye.
Tom Bowles.
Aye.
Joy Blankenship.
Aye.
Tommy Baker.
Aye.
Bobby Deans.
Aye.
Ian Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Tony Carter.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Phil. Phil, Tom Petty.
Aye.
Rob Rob.
Aye.
All eyes on the chair.
Next item is employee health insurance. You have in your package or on the table, a, some information that I left. Ms. Loach, she'll go over this with you so everyone will understand about employee insurance.
Your packet should look like this piece of paper on the front. It has a comparison of what we're currently paying and what has been proposed by Blue Cross as well as Humana. And I informed the budget committee last Monday night that we were in negotiations with our healthcare providers. As you recall, Blue Cross and Mountain State Health Alliance did not have an agreement until the very last minute. Our employees would not have had service at any Mountain State Health Alliance facility had that agreement not been reached. Ms. Connie Tate, who's here tonight, she called me and wanted to know if it would be of interest to us to go ahead and request bids for health insurance, should that agreement not come about. I had received several phone calls from various commissioners as well as county employees who were very concerned about the coverage and what would happen, so I advised her to go ahead and see what we could get. Then, as you know, very last minute, Mountain State and Blue Cross came to an agreement and it was a four-year agreement. Ms. Tate again called me and asked me if we wanted to proceed with this, just to see if there'd be any savings involved. Our employees wouldn't be affected because the agreement was done, but it might be a savings if we had the other companies to bid on that. So, what has resulted is we received a bid from Blue Cross Blue Shield, which is our current provider. You can see that in the middle column there, the first one with pricing to the left. That's what we're currently paying. They came in with a renewal rate that's twelve percent below current rates. That's approximately eighteen thousand dollar savings per mo for that. Humana also came in with a reduction in current rates. They're at ten point one nine percent reduction. And in the back of that, you'll see the official rate sheets that I gave you, one for Blue Cross and the next one is for Humana. Humana did not have vision coverage in their original medical insurance quotes, so you'll see that on the back. That's the vision coverage for that. If you add those two quotes together, you'll get what's on this front sheet. We have had no problems with Blue Cross Blue Shield Insurance. To my knowledge, there's been no reports of anything going against the employees. They are very satisfied with that. One thing that I need to note to this, the renewal, but renewal date will be July the first. That will put us on a fiscal year plan. Currently, we're on a calendar year plan. And when budget times come, we have to predict what's going to happen January one. If we were to do this renewal, we would be July one through June thirtieth, which would be right with our budget and there shouldn't be any predicting. We should have quotes and everything should be ready for the next year. My recommendation is that you renew with Blue Cross because you recognize the most savings for that. Connie Tate's here from Tri-Ton Insurance, she's your broker, she'll be glad to answer questions and I will be as well.
Mr. Loach, is that eighteen thousand of those savings?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sisk.
I make a motion that we pay for the Blue Cross, Blue Shield.
Second.
And a motion by Mr. Sisk, seconded by Mr. Arden to keep Blue Cross and Blue Shield as our insurance provider. Any discussion? Please. No motion from the chamber. I'll roll, please.
Peter Peter.
Aye.
Mark Ryan.
Aye.
Nate Brandt.
Aye.
George Street.
Aye.
Richard Wynn.
Aye.
Ronnie Cribb.
Aye.
Mary Sisk.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Calvin Boyd, Clark County have conflict with Anderson closing back the building. I require my attorney, my lawyer, my conscience, my obligation, my constituents, my citizens. This body represents, aye.
Please. Steve Moran.
Aye.
Tom Bowles.
Aye.
Joy Blankenship.
Aye.
Tommy Baker.
Aye.
Bobby Deans.
Aye.
Ian Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Tony Carter.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Petty.
Aye.
Rob Rob.
Aye.
Nancy, if you want.
No.
You just go pass.
Yep.
One thousand five hundred dollars, aye, motion chair. My last management committee.
The Financial Management Committee made an opportunity twelve and I gave the committee the evaluation that I have given to all of the office holders and, and she has an excellent evaluation. So with that said, I would propose that we go with her rates that we have voted on before for her to get each year. And she has enough in her budget to cover the raise so that as of July one, her raise will be twenty-five hundred dollars for the year two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. And I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Blankenship, seconded by Mr. Keller to go ahead and approve the already agreed compromise for the finance director. But I have a discussion. I'll roll, please.
Peter Peter.
Aye.
Mark Ryan.
Aye.
Nate Brandt.
Aye.
George Street.
Aye.
Richard Wynn.
Aye.
Ronnie Cribb.
Aye.
I'm sorry, wrong.
Aye.
Mary Sisk.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Steve Moran.
Aye.
Tom Bowles.
Aye.
Joy Blankenship.
Aye.
Tommy Baker.
Aye.
Bobby Deans.
Aye.
Ian Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
John.
Tony Carter.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sam, Phil, Tom Petty.
Aye.
Rob Rob.
Aye.
Two votes, no response.
Two votes, rest aside, motion chairs.
The Financial Management Committee, we're looking at soft accounting software for the finance department. And we have two vendors that we're looking at. One of us, we had three and the third one was way out of our price range. There's no way that we could entertain the price that they had quoted. So, we will be looking at the software for that. They'll come in and give us a presentation. Then with the health and welfare, our biggest joy for the health and welfare committee came from one of the health and welfare committee members, Lonnie Cribb. And then he chaired with the committee. He is now cancer-free. So I think that is just marvelous that after all these years, he is now cancer-free.
Congratulations. Building Grounds Committee. National Turbine Court. Landfill Committee.
The minutes reflect our meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Loach. Law Enforcement Committee. Move by.
Good.
Anything from the planning?
We have a, the Menace from the Mark Committee in fact, we met on the twenty-eighth of May and those committees will be approved in our next meeting.
Have I overlooked any other committee? Mr. Loach.
I've got a question from the planning committee. What I did, I thought, we have this, I know this probably, we don't build, lots of old homes, all this trash on the highway. What took so long getting this done?
I'd say probably best I can add to me the other day, I guess the county attorney will probably explain that we need to revamp our federal control law, make it more simplistic. So we do, we're working on those now, work on that. With these dilapidated structures, nursing homes supposedly, while that falls into the care and the county attorney that's looking at that information there. And some of this last probably, family members just leave that lady. We have worked a lot of crap, met out, met out, we're looking at that.
Mr. Lawrence.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to commend Avery for keeping her head on this insurance. If she had proceeded the way she did, we could have been the world's greatest insurance. And I'd like to commend her for that.
Quite correct, that's savings of several hundred thousand dollars. And we appreciate her diligence.
I think Connie Tate's already left, but Connie Tate deserves a big thank you because she worked very hard to get that done and she did it in a little over a week's time. And I just think that's commendable for her. She did a great job.
She's rare pitched about two hundred and five thousand dollars. She earned about a hundred breaks, did she, Charlie?
Certainly did. After the committee reports, we'll have the county attorney report.
Couple of things, or just several things we worked on this month. First, revised animal shelter contract adoption, or adoption contractors prepared for the animal shelter, the adoption process on animals there, revision of that. We had several meetings with Mr. Tom Anderson of Clark County tomorrow concerning the beginning of some pilot agreements that were voted on through the industrial bond board. And counsel for each of the individual companies we're dealing with have been contacted and right now the ball's in their quarters, some parents and documentation that are needed. Had a good meeting with the mayor and several citizens. I think the mayor's already covered on the Hampton project. Also talked with the representative of USDA, I got some forms and some things that they need to see completed on behalf of the county. And we're moving that to project court in conjunction with mayor's office as far as getting a Hampton project completed. Revised, completed an historic donation document for the county historian Scott Bowers. And it's something that Mr. Bowers can use not only for this particular item, but for all the items in the future. And it's part of the creation of a foreign banquet salad that we've been completing for several departments by doing these forms in a manner that'll allow us to be used, but time and time again. And save money in the future if once we've got a good set of forms. Had a hearing and completed the case for sessions court on one-twenty Lincoln Drive to allow for the demolition of the property there and to have the property bearing compliance with zoning code. And that'll be completed in the next couple of weeks if the property's not cleaned accordingly, according to the county statutes or county codes. Had a good meeting with city, county and the mayor as far as some several industrial development issues and those were addressed to the Clark County tomorrow attorney. We have prepared deeds for the Ritter Town Road project as far as the bridge project. There'll be one property owner so far that's been refusing to sign that deed and that'd be something very lonely to go and do a combination on that gentleman. We review several T-DOT agreements, but most importantly, the T-DOT agreement, we may end up referring to the city on the South Side Road project. Something brought to my attention by mayor, Mr. Perkins, and Jack's help on that was instrumental and we're going to get that over to the city. We've got a new file that we'll be giving you update on next couple of months concerning some cemetery issues and a Campbell survey that's been brought in. And it's quite intensive and it's going to take a meeting between Mr. Perkins, myself and the mayor to move that matter forward. And hopefully have a report next month to give you a little bit more information. Last month, the commission voted on the moving forward of a reasonable and a manageable amount of excess property to auction. We began to pull the necessary deeds and information for that and we'll begin working more closely with Mr. Loach to schedule the auction of those excess properties and get those properties back on the county tax trail and get some money for general fund as well as a process. We were contacted by Baker Donaldson, a firm which we've done business with several times as far as the initial preparation of a pilot agreement for the John Sheehan project that Mr. Anderson brought up. That's something that I just received, I've asked Mr. Anderson, I'll wait for instruction from him as to if that's going to move forward or not. And as Mr. Schuler just mentioned, had a good meeting with the mayor, chairman Bowers, equalization board and the chairman of the planning commission and Mr. Schuler himself. Asked you some several ideas to take back to the school commission as to either complete overall of the county letter ordinance or simplification of the same, to use the current code we have. Either way, just to make some adjustments so the code works better. It's pretty old and been in place for a while and truly it just needs some changes. It needs an update and a simplification or an overhaul that we may adopt for different county, depending on what the commission ultimately decides to do. But we'll have that information for you and we're moving that forward as well.
Mr. Schuler.
Yes, sir.
On the road to Ritter Town, the bridge in question.
Yes, sir.
That's been in debate for two years.
Yes, sir.
And you said that one man wasn't signing the deed up there?
We've got all the deeds prepared for everyone else, but the one, I think Mr. Perkins may update you a little bit on that before we leave tonight. There's, there's one gentleman who is, who is, who is making a claim to owning property on the other side of the road, but the survey shows he's not own.
It's not, he don't own, I don't understand.
That's what the surveyor shows. So we will need to file suit to condemn his property and it's a very small piece. And ultimately, I think after we go through highway committee next month, we may present to go and ask for permission to file suit on behalf of the county.
Yeah, I think that needs to be rushed out, that's been in debate a long time.
Yes, sir. Mr. Perkins, I think, I think we're going to present it, I imagine, to Mr. Streets committee. I know you're filling in for Mr. Richards.
It's been surveyed, nevermind.
It has, yes, sir. It has. So, and after surveys, we prepare the deeds for the homeowners who are in agreement and hope to have those signed later this week or sometime next week.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I would like to say, Mr. Williams, is that property also going to be re-surveyed? We'll have two surveys, huh?
Out, out of an abundance of caution, I will probably ask the land, the highway committee to get a second survey on the one track that is being contested. Because when I sue, if we sue for condemnation and we only sue to condemn the property that we, that our surveyor says the man owns and later, later he could prove that he owns additional property, then we would have to amend that. additional property, then we would have to amend that. I would rather go ahead if I had to sue to quit title now and do them at the same time, so I can move both cases parallel, so at the end of the day, I know I've got everything covered. It, it, it's a belts and suspenders approach, but it would save us having to go back and file a second suit five to six minutes down the road to get to the same point. I'd rather, I'd rather have the, the somewhat of additional expense and do them together at the same time, but I...
The man won't sign it, is he want money in the rich part, or he claims he owns it, or what?
Mr. Perkins has offered him, I think, what I would consider a reasonable sum. He, the, the problem lies with the fact that he feels he owns additional property across the road. When you look at the deed and look at the survey...
And I'm showing...
Mr. Trippett, I just don't believe his argument holds water. I don't believe it holds water. I think he's, I don't, I don't believe he owns what he thought he owned.
Any other questions for the county attorney?
I wish to be, uh, nominated for that championship, I was a host for that.
Appreciate that.
Uh, Commissioner Collins, Mr. Loretta.
Mr. Bowers, I know you've been, uh, uh, you've received a lot of criticism in the past few days, uh, you've got a little bad, uh, credit coming in from the past few days. I, for one, would like to personally thank you, uh, for saving the town, pardon, actually $20,000, uh, over the next few years, and I think you showed some good leadership, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loretta. Mr. Ron Kent, my good friend.
Recently, I asked, uh, a question at budget meeting, and I was given two minutes after the meeting was over, and I couldn't get up in two minutes. Let me, let's do some math, if you will. Let's do some math. If we, rather than buy two small school buses for $105,000, if we can, by going around Spaulding Bridge next year and the year after and the year after, because we probably never build a Spaulding Bridge until we get Rittertown to build, but we're talking about adding the distance 40 miles per day, two buses, two big buses, 180 school lanes, that gives Divide that into 7,200 miles, wind up with roughly 14 or 15, times $3, just say $3 a gallon. For less than $5,000, you've saved $100,000. Now, here's the rest of the story. Why won't two buses work? Because when you shut down range, you had 97 students that were adding to mix, right? Add it to 22, but what I'm saying is, you've saved some money, if you look at this.
You got some very valid points, Mr. Collins.
Okay, let's, let's put those out there next year.
Thank you. The place... We have the school board meeting.
Uh, okay, let's go to another, let's not school, please.
All right.
Six paid, six days a year.
Did you, did you turn?
And this probably ought to be taken up in some other meeting. Six paid, six days a year. That's not an automatic, that's if you need it. Mind looking at this, now, some people scheduling their sick days with holidays. Now, how do you know you're gonna be sick pretty much now? If you looked at that and really managerially got on top of that, let's say 200 people, X number over 1,000, 1,300 sick days a year, plus you gotta pass up to do, you gotta pass up to do those six days, you could save $264,000. If you don't like that number, just have it, $130,000. Mr., uh, our county layers correct about this business of, uh, of local government versus private industry. Newspaper article just in, uh, county, uh, National County Association, uh, magazine. Private industry is paying 6% more starting salaries. However, in benefits, state and local government exceeds industry by 6%, so that's a fair dollar. Health benefits, private industry, 7.7% of pay. Health benefits to public and local, public and state, 11.7%. Retirement benefits, private industry, 3.6% of base pay. Retirement benefits in the public sector, and state, state local government, 8.9%. So this business of being underpaid is true on the lower end, but longevity makes public service a pretty good deal, but there's coming a time, there's coming a time when you're gonna be in trouble. Mr., our mayor has said that several times, and I wanna echo that. There's two or three other things that, uh, make sense to me, but I may not, anybody else will. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ron Kent. Have motion to adjourn, or Mr. Loretta?
Hold on, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I...
When I gave the report, I forgot to tell, uh, and Mr. Trippett reminded me, uh, in the health and welfare, the law enforcement, uh, groups and bylaws and buildings and grounds committee meeting, we voted to meet on quarterly basis instead of on a monthly basis, with the understanding that if something came up, we'd call a meeting to discuss it, and we voted to do that on the first month of each quarter, and later on, we discussed it, and we decided it'd be best to do it on the last month of the, the quarter instead of the first month. So that's what we're going to do.
Thank you, Ms. Blankenship. You should be commended for...
To save the life of a gentleman.
That's correct. We have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Bowers, say goodbye to Ms. Culler. All the players say aye?
Aye.